Hey, what's up everybody? It's the liberal loudmouth. So I am going live because I'm going to livestream the Owasso School Board meeting and there's probably going to be quite a few comments related to next Benedict. So let's go ahead and get this pulled up here. I had almost forgotten about it and then I'm like, oh crap, they're doing it. So let's just pull this up here and get it started. Let me fast forward a bit. We're about
Mr. England.
Behind.
Mr. Kessler. Ms. Mills.
Present.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Present.
And Mr. Turpin.
Present. Go to item number two, special recognition, pledge of allegiance. Ms. Cooper, Carly Musgrove, Rogers, and Chris Turner.
Hey, what's up Andrew? I appreciate you showing up.
At my, at this time, it's my privilege to introduce two of our amazing seniors that we have. And we have Carly Musgrove Rogers and Chris Turner, both seniors with us. Just a couple of things to kind of highlight their accomplishments while they've been with us. Carly has been involved in several things throughout her time with us, including LARP Robotics, Asian American Heritage Club, also
I may have to leave and come back again.
She plans to go to USAO.
Some reason Chrome just runs like crap with Dream Yard.
Pre-med or education. And then we also have Chris Turner. He's been involved in various
Can y'all hear me? Please let me know in the comment section because I wasn't able to to test it before I went live.
Local elementaries. And he also has participated heavily in concurrent classes. And he plans to go to OSU in the fall and double major in computers and electrical engineering. If you would please welcome Carly and Chris to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's go Carly and Chris.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
I thank you for clarifying that.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carly. As Ms. Cooper mentioned, I am a senior at Owasso High School. And I am very thankful for being able to talk to you guys. So thank you very much, Ms. Cooper. Um, so I just want to start out, I wanted to say some of my experience with Owasso High School. And like unlike Chris and probably a lot of your guys' kids, I came into Owasso High School in my sophomore year. And I would I tell you that I knew nobody? I knew absolutely no one. I had been homeschooled since sixth, since third grade and I had been doing it for a sport. And then the last until after sixth grade,
I'm gonna pull myself out real quick and I'm gonna come back in.
Online homeschooling, basically. I had no idea what I was doing coming into public school. My only ideas of what public school was were from high school movies and my very overdramatic older sister. Um, so I didn't have the best image painted and I was very nervous. So I went in not knowing anybody, like I said, and it shocked me how quickly I got friends. Because I was thinking I was going to be like the new kid, the outcast, not having a place. And I immediately, like within the first week, I had like plans to go out with friends and go to Boba and go do fun things like that. And that was so exciting to me, coming from somebody who had the same friends for the past like five years, who were all like gymnasts and didn't go to public school and I
Oh, sorry guys, one second. There we go. Can you hear it now, Andrew? Can you still not hear it? I may have to go back, but it's for some reason Chrome runs like crap on this. And I want to point out that they, that Tiffany Cooper is the one that put them up to this. This is exactly what they did to me. Okay, let me, let me fix that real quick. I'm so sorry about that. This Give me a second. It's so weird. There it goes.
All right, let's find something.
Did you hear that now?
To the first LARP club meeting, kind of as a joke, because it seemed so nerdy. Does anybody in here know what LARP club is?
I think I know why I did that on the other one.
LARP club is live action roleplay. And when I tell you it's very nerdy, it is. It absolutely is. I'm not gonna lie.
My daughter was actually in LARP club.
There and I, I'm not a big
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I
Renaissance person. I just thought it was kind of be gonna be fun and
Crazy.
And it absolutely was. It was so much fun and coming from someone that was in sports and stuff, going into live action.
Now, what, what this kid is doing is, is softening the upcoming, and I, you know, I'm just gonna pause it because we're not even live at this moment. Uh, and I'll end up fast forwarding. This kid is softening what the comments are going to come because they put all those nasty comments or the ones that are going to be about next Benedict. They purposely put them at the end and brought these kids in to make these statements to showcase just how great and wonderful Owasso Public Schools is. They did the exact same shit to me, um, whenever it came to that policy stuff. If, if you followed my case, that is.
Go build like weaponry, which are pool noodles, but you can go build like fun stuff and decorate it, or you can go build your costume. And it's so fun for that reason. And then it's something for the kids that like want to be creative and be theater and make their characters and play them on the field. And then it's something for kids like me that just want to go thwack their friends with pool noodles. And because of all those aspects, it's just one of the many examples of a way that anybody, no matter what you think you're into, can come together and kind of have all fun together. And I know that sounds like a really kind of nerdy club that like nobody would want to go to, but that's our biggest club in our school with over 160 members. I mean, that is just kind of a display of how
It must have grown since my daughter was in LARP.
And have fun together and what be welcoming to just about every person. Like I said, I was not very good at it. I
And that lady that was up there earlier, that was Tiffany Cooper. That's the principal of the high school.
Very big into my character or anything of the sort. And I certainly wasn't very good at the fighting portion. I would get tapped out every like two minutes. The next year I became the president because it was just fun and I got to talk to people and every single person in that club feels welcomed and it's a place for everybody. And it's, that's just kind of the entire consensus of Owasso High School. It's just that there's a place for everybody. You always have a mentor and no matter what your interests or goals are, you have someone backing you and in your corner. And that's was amazing for me coming in as somebody who needed
And by doing this, they allow her to be able to go on as long as she wants to. Whereas the people that are making comments, public comments are restricted in time.
That was willing to help you through every step of the way. During my junior year, I got to go be an office aide in the West Campus Office, and that was also an amazing experience because there's a lot of the talk in like classrooms of just like, oh, I don't know. I, I don't know what's going on with my grades. I don't know what's going on with this thing in administration, like my, my grades, this, my curriculum, this, blah, blah, blah. Right? There's just always something that's like, I don't know. Working in the, um, working in the, uh, the secretary office, the administrative assistant, I was her aide. It was really eye opening because I got to see all of these kids that I had never spoken to and I wasn't really in their group or in their friend group. And they would come in and they could just talk to any counselor that they wanted to and the administrative assistance and anybody that they wanted to. And they were getting like their issues solved so quickly. And it was just really amazing.
Wow.
How much people care. And I thought
I mean, I believe that this child has had this experience, but it's no accident that she's giving this speech today.
And we still say, hey, how are you? How's things?
I've never seen
Something that I think and hope
Anybody, any one person speak for this long ever.
And I know that there's people in sports that have that with their coaches and that's so amazing and it's so highlighted with coaches, but I think it's really cool to highlight that that's how teachers are too. And that's how our counselors are too. And anybody from an administrative assistant to a teaching assistant can be like that at OHS. Kids are great at OHS and that's what I've learned. And the teachers are great and the staff is great and administration is great from my experience. And it's been a wonderful time. The entire time I've been there and I'm really sad that I'm going to be leaving, but I've really enjoyed my time being there.
Well, Ron, uh, you add your thoughts to it. I mean, good on you, I guess, for making that speech, but you're, they're, they're using you.
I'm a senior at OHS and one of the things that I want to talk about, I don't have this is amazing story like Carly does, but one of the things that I want to talk about is how well Owasso has prepared me for the future outside of high school.
Listen to this.
Begin, wow, advanced classes about in sixth grade and then ever since I just kept going, kept going.
I told you Margaret is, she's clever.
Senior right now, and I have the opportunity to have one year of college already done. So now I get to go to OSU and that helps so much. I just went to OSU over this weekend. And now I, I have one year done and now I get the opportunity to double major in computer and electrical engineering. So that gets to help out a lot. I'm just so thankful that Owasso just pays for the TCC classes and helps with the books and things like
Owasso doesn't pay for that. The state does.
But I just wanted
State pays for that.
Thank you, guys.
That, that's a state thing and, and possibly even a county.
Thank you Carly and Chris.
That's Margaret talking.
The front Carly and Chris and get a picture with the board members. We would love that.
We would love that. Oh, listen to me. Now I'll point them out to you. Maybe you can't see, yeah, you can't see my cursor, but, uh, so the one on the left there, Stephanie Rutman is blond headed. Brent England is in the white. He's the guy that actually got into it with uh, Frosty Turpin is on the far right in the gray shirt. Oh, they're like, Tim's calling us out. We better swap. That's Rhonda Mills over there on the far left. Uh, they're missing Neil the Weasel Kessler. I guess he was too busy lying to everybody. Show up. He's like, ah, I'm tired of getting gripped at. I ain't showing up. Let's see what other shenanigans they've got.
Three reports to the board.
There's Margaret Coate in the back in the blue.
Yes, good evening, board members.
This camera, what is going on?
But in my report tonight, I address the recent loss of one of our own.
Oh.
Next Benedict.
Yeah.
A bright and promising young student. As educators, when we look into the eyes
Pandering bitch.
We see the reflection of our own children. This is why the passing of one of our students is always a profound tragedy and difficult for everyone. Our thoughts and prayers continue to be with Nexus family, friends, teachers, and all who knew next. I'm proud that in times like this, our school community continues to come together, to reflect, support one another, and ensure that every student feels a sense of safety, security, and belonging within our school walls. As we continue
Yeah, that's why you didn't call the police, huh? Just on the parents.
On the safety and wellbeing of staff and students. Over the past few weeks, we have offered continuous counseling support for both students and staff. We have also provided additional law enforcement and security personnel at our sites. And we will continue to cooperate with local and federal officials. I'd also like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to the Owasso community, including our law enforcement partners, business leaders, chamber partners, faith leaders, and our own school community for the outpouring of support during this difficult time. The solidarity, compassion, and kindness exhibited by our students, teachers, parents, central office staff, and board members has been a source of strength for myself and many others. It is incredibly heartwarming to see our school family come together to support one another in the face of this tragedy. I'd also like to say a special thank you to high school principal Tiffany Cooper and her administrative team.
Yeah, there's go. Protect the staff lady.
In supporting and caring for our students and staff during this incredibly challenging
Yeah, Tiffany Cooper, the one that refused to call the police.
Serves as a reminder that we must continue our
She's so great.
In our district strategic plan to create a safe and nurturing environment. As we move forward with our strategic plan, this is an opportunity for us to review our policies, curriculum, and programs. I remain committed to listening and collaborating with students, families, staff, and community. And I invite everyone to join OPS in this important work. Our mission as a public school is to love, challenge, and prepare all students for life after high school.
Except for the ones you let die in your school.
In closing, the best way that we can honor the memory of next Benedict is to continue to
Is providing justice.
The way you want to be treated.
Justice.
Dignity, respect, compassion, understanding every single day.
Is that what you did to her? Is that what you did to her? Com- compassion?
Dr. Coats, I just want to say thank you for sharing those words.
That's Stephanie Rutman. And they're like besties.
Personal condolences, um, to family and friends and really all
No.
affected by this loss and, um, I appreciate your leadership and I have full confidence in you and your team to lead our district.
These people are shameless.
Thank you.
They're like psychopaths. Boo is right. Thank you. Thank you.
Time out, timeout.
Well, watch out. You're gonna get banned.
This is a public meeting. We will respect everyone that speaks. No one is to interrupt.
That's Brent England talking. Shut up, Brent.
That is not the point.
We'll kick you out.
If you cannot follow these rules, you will be escorted out.
And you'll be banned from school property for six months.
Others as you would like to be treated yourself.
Fuck off, Brent.
Thank you very much.
Boo. I'll fucking boo you from here. Boo.
Yes.
Yes, they'll ban you lady. They'll ban you.
Would you like to leave? Whoever said that?
Yeah.
Sure that happens.
Oh yeah, they already did that once.
Either follow the rules or voluntarily leave the building.
I followed the rules. Fucking hypocrite is what he said. That's right. You're a fucking hypocrite. Call him, say it, let him have it. Let these fuckers have it. Every last one of them.
Okay, we're ready to go item B, teaching and learning, Mr. Officer.
Mark Officer, he's assistant superintendent. He's a good dude. He's a good dude right here.
Little update on the teaching learning department. First of all, you're going to see several requisitions tonight and some contracts for math adoption. That's a process we've been going through this year.
Now I'm gonna fast forward through some of this.
Committee of teach that for that's something placed started that.
Oh. Know that I, you guys come on in. Um, we have a special group of student athletes here that went down to
Check out student athletes, give them their props.
And our community, our school district in a first class manner. Um, if you know Coach Montanati, you know that
They have a great athletic program in the Owasso.
And the emotion that he likes to use, um, to introduce these guys. So I'll just introduce to you
Ron, is that Zach talking?
Two thousand and twenty-four, six A state champion basketball team, Coach Brian Montanati.
Champion. Yeah, Owasso has a lot of resources, y'all. A lot of resources.
Off, I'll say, um, it's an honor and privilege to, uh, to be here with these extraordinary young men and getting to introduce them, um, and the recognition that they rightfully deserve. Uh, I'll brag on them for one second before I introduce them. Um, the team finished twenty-six and four. We broke a school record for most wins.
Damn.
They won, uh, the regional, they won area consolation, and then more importantly, they qualified for state and then went down and played unbelievable
Whoops a mess, did they?
And beat the two-time defendant.
Ah.
Champ, uh, with, they thought they had the best player, but we have the best player on our team. So
That's funny.
That's off to them. Not only were they
Good job, guys.
On the basketball court, but they're exceptional students in the classroom. And I believe that's what makes them so successful, uh, in the athletic field. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce them real quick. I'll introduce my, my coaching staff. I've got, when I introduce you guys, raise your hand. I got Ricky Peker, uh, Jerry Peker, um, James Scott, Jaden Llewellyn, Nick Thompson, and our manager, Samara Green, Dalton Hibbert, and Jaylene Pareda. Um, our players are number zero, Nico Nguan. Number one, Jalen Montanati. Number two, Cody Leckleider. Number three, Bowden Williams. Number four, MJ Milton. Number ten, Vince Sims. Number eleven, Crew Byerly. Number twelve, or number fifteen, Jax Kerr. Number twenty, Spencer LeBeau. Number twenty-one, Gabe Patterson. Number twenty-two, Cohen Scott. Number twenty-three, Colton Hibbert. Number twenty-four, Gage Nantua. Number thirty, Anthony Barnes. And number thirty-two, Anson Harbaugh. Twenty-three, twenty-four, six A, class A, state champ.
I know you guys can't see me from back there, but, um, uh, we'd like the board members to take a picture with you guys.
Let's line up like we would for a team picture. Tall guys, I mean, about three rows.
Uh, Brent England is the guy that was, and to be fair, Brent England is currently the sitting board president. He was the one that was speaking and saying those things. A year ago, it would have been Neil that said those things. That's just kind of a formality, but yes, that was Brent England. In fact, that's the guy that I got into it with in the parking lot who grabbed my shoulder and, and, uh, led to, you know, partially led to me being banned. Thank God. Thank you, ladies. All right. Well, good work on the basketball.
Is it tomorrow or is it Wednesday?
The guy in the middle in the white shirt, that's the one that was saying all that shit.
Yeah, track project is now under construction, uh, the track fencing.
That's the facility director, uh, God, what's his name? Uh, starts with a K. Kerner.
Uh, they've agreed
Yeah, Kerner. Uh, we'll, we'll get forward. We're about to be live.
They do resume writing. surveys to
There we go. Now we're live.
College and career fairs. Um, as you know, the high school began doing industry, um, fairs, um, periodically, and that's going over really well. And, uh, they do resume writing and just all sorts of different activities. Uh, super proud of all of our, um, secondary principals who have worked hard, um, as we've gone through that process. Um, additionally, uh, the, the emphasis on the professional learning community process continues and our principals
And the guy talking is Mark Officer, the assistant superintendent. He should be the one running that school, not, not Margaret Coats.
On making sure that students learn, um, a focus on learning rather than necessarily a focus on what's being taught. Um, a focus on making sure the kids are actually learning what's being taught. And we're seeing gains with that. Um, our, our teachers are reporting that, um, they feel, uh, less stress and less anxiety because they're working as teams now instead of working individually, um, which is fun to watch and listen to. Uh, we hear that a lot, especially from new teachers to the field. Um, as you know, it can be a little bit overwhelming. Um, lots going on all the time if you're a teacher. And so, um, it's great to be able to offer them support and through those, um, professional learning communities, um, they're gaining that support. Um, so that's, that's also been really good. And then, um, the last item on, uh, on our part is, um, all day pre-K. And you guys know that we, um, the committee a couple of weeks ago decided how we're going to pursue that. And, um, we're excited about what that might look like over the next few months. Any questions? Thank you.
Takes us to item four, comments from the public regarding agenda items. I understand we have one speaker.
Now this is comments only for things that are on the agenda. The
Rules a second before you approach.
Listen, wow.
Each person will have five minutes to share their remarks.
Brent, don't be a fucking dick.
Item identified by the individual when signing up the seat.
Wow.
Time allocated, this section of public comment will not exceed fifteen minutes. School board policies
See That's Brent's attitude and that's what he was doing that night in the parking lot. That kind of shit.
Pupil suspensions and appeals and litigation to avoid circumvention of these separate proceedings and to assure fairness to all parties. Concerned no person will be allowed to speak regarding the following. An issue in a pending lawsuit complaint or into the investigation filed with an outside agency unless the school district, its employees, or the board of
I'll go back to Brent.
Pending grievance, pending employee complaint filed filed, excuse me, with the school district or an outside agency.
The guy next to Brent, he's been there for over thirty years as a school board member.
Or pending student suspension or appeal that may reach the board of education. Each speaker will be addressing the board as a whole and each speaker's remark will be taken into consideration by the board. There will be no action taken tonight on the comments from the public as the board members can only take action on previously published agenda items. Other community members in attendance at this public meeting are asked to refrain, refrain from making comments or engaging behaviors to keep the board of education from hearing the person making remarks. Should those in attendance not refrain from disruptive behaviors, the individuals will be removed from the board of education meeting. We appreciate everyone's efforts to conduct a productive meeting and to model behaviors.
For the record, this speech is standard. Neil Kessler used to read it every time. And now they can stop him if he gets off topic. He has to only talk about agenda items.
Hear about school security. Apparently people don't feel safe here. I can't imagine why at all. The more our Wolf School Board would see the death of a child and work to make sure it never happens again.
Oh, in this portion, Andrew.
That's a good start.
In this portion, the non-agenda will be at the end of the meeting.
And by all children, they mean, you know, these children, not so much these children. You know, hate us if you want, but you know, we're the good guys. You know, we want to let kids be kids and there's nothing more unnatural than a teenager experimenting with their identity. It has never happened before and should be punished. We're the good guys.
They're gonna cut him off.
Blame the parents and tell our teenagers to hit them.
They may not though. That'd be dumb.
We're the good guys. When we heard that a trans child had been beaten to death, our state senator, Tom Woods, immediately released a statement.
Calling it filth. What a piece of shit.
That filth in Oklahoma.
Yeah.
We can call children filth, even the dead ones, because, you know, we're the good guys. And if we're wrong, you know, if God doesn't want us driving off the lepers and deviants and worshiping the bankers. If our God doesn't want us casting the first stone, if our God doesn't want us loving people despite their differences, well, if we're wrong, then I guess I'll see you all in hell. Thank you.
Um, I actually thought Brent might cut him off because not only was he not looking at the board, Um, I, I actually thought Brent might cut him off, because not only was he not looking at the board, he was looking at the audience, because you're technically supposed to address the board members themselves, but. Now, it can take a while to get to the comments. It could be an hour, just heads up. You probably have plenty of time to get a drink, smoke a cigarette, or whatever.
Outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the agreement under district services, current capacity numbers for transfer students, e-finance, purchase orders, encumbrances, and changes to encumbrances for February of twenty-four, activity financial report for February of twenty-four.
I thought about signing up to speak, but.
Activity account budgets, after human resources transitions. Do we have any questions?
I have a question. Who does number two work for, Brent?
I move we vote to approve the consent agenda items.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rutman. Yes, Mr. Turpin.
For the record, I don't know that I've seen anyone other than Brent vote no on anything that was put in front of them. Just rubber stamp.
Yes, so Mr. Kerry Patton from the auditing firm of Patton and Odom is here to present our audit.
This guy, this guy's a dick, but he's gone, he's shit. This guy knows the shit.
Document will be submitted to the Oklahoma State Department of Education, as it always is, and it will also be posted to our district website, as it always is. So again, this is for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty.
He's the finance guy.
Thank you. Good afternoon or good evening.
He's like, this is awkward.
Please to present your two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three audit report. Um, I would like to uh run through the booklet with you a little bit, if you all have that in front of you. Uh, I know in past years I've gone through every page. I'm gonna spare y'all this year unless you have any uh desire for me to go through.
They're gonna probably, gonna wanna waste as much time as possible.
Page one is uh the independent audit report. That's where I attest to the reason of the financial statements. It basically says that our uh uh audit uh found your, your financial statements to be accurate and free of any misstatement. It talks about being on a qualified basis or qualified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. That has to do with the uh uh capital assets. As I tell you every year, I don't think we have one school on the regulatory basis of accounting that has the capital asset records to put in the financial statements, and so uh there's a qualification based on that, but that, that is uh, you're in the same boat with a hundred percent of the other schools on a regulatory basis. Um, it talks uh on the second page, it talks a little bit about uh responsibilities of management for the financial statements. Your responsibility, I'm sure you well know, is for the prayer, uh prayer presentation and, and for adequate internal controls here at the school. It then gives uh our several paragraphs there about the auditor's responsibilities for the audit of the financial statements, and it goes into a little bit, some very summarized uh uh detail.
And for those just showing up, the comments that you're probably here to see are gonna be towards the end, probably thirty minutes to an hour away.
This report is set up. It's got the basic financial statements up front and then notes to the financial statements. Then back in the back, there's supplemental, supplementary schedules such as your uh schedule of federal awards, your activity fund schedules, and some budget to actuarial back there. Uh, and and all this simply says on page three is that we subjected the same type of audit procedures to that information as we did to the basic financial statements. We found that information to be free of material misstatement as well. The last paragraph there uh simply uh alerts the readers that there's two other uh reports in here, and we'll be going over them in just a minute. One of them's on internal control, and another one has to do with the federal financial assistance programs. Um, I would, if you don't mind, I'd get you to turn over to page five. Page five of the uh audit report is your combined statement of revenues collected, expenditures paid, and changes in fund balance. I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably gonna get pretty wild. Those, those people were heated. I don't blame them. But yeah, this school will kick their asses out, have them arrested, throw them in chains, whip them.
About five million dollars less last year than you took in and.
I'm being hyperbolic, but you know, you get the idea.
Fourteen million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, a very strong uh fund balance for the general fund. Your special revenue, it's fund type there. Your special revenue, you're building fund, your child nutrition together, then your debt service, that's the money that we levy to pay your bonded indebtedness and an interest on that every year, and um that fund balance is really, I mean, it's relevant, but it's not relevant except that it's, that it's sitting there to pay uh debt and interest. Then your capital projects shows that you went from thirty-eight million last year to forty-six million at the end of June of twenty-three, or nearly forty-seven million in fund balance in your capital projects funds. Um, you've got notes to the financial statements after that, and these notes uh give quite a bit of additional information. Um, it also gives a lot of definitions in here, so if you get to reading that you wanna be careful, you could go to sleep uh till you get back.
Yeah.
Like page fourteen gives uh.
This stuff is like watching grass grow.
Your debt, I think that's interesting.
Hey, what's up, Kenny?
Retirement system and your participation in that. Uh, and some other basic uh uh basic items of the school district, talks about your early retirement fund, uh that type of thing, just more information to kind of uh back up or uh go along with the financial statements that we looked at, uh we just looked at. Uh, if I could get you to turn all the way over to page twenty-seven, this is a, a schedule that I think is real important to you. This is your federal financial assistance schedule, and pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight, there will show on the left-hand side, all the federal programs that Owasso participates.
I don't know. I believe he is part of an independent audit that they're required to get. Philip Storm is the CFO, and he introduced this guy, so I think he's from a company that they paid independently to do the audit. I think I've seen him before, but I don't know what his name is. I don't think he's employed by the school, though. Contracted, but not employed.
And you can see all the way over on page twenty-eight that y'all expended eleven million, four hundred and four thousand dollars worth of federal government's money last year.
They're good at spending money.
Do they, are they uh big on uh handing out the money? They're big on the auditing of it.
He looks, does.
I think I've told y'all about before, but it's like uh, it's got every federal.
What I've learned about finance guys and accountants is they're usually pretty dry. Brent is an accountant, too, and he looks a little weird, too.
And uh it gives us recommended audit procedures that we run on the federal programs that we uh select as major, and those would be the ones on the left that have a asterisk on the left-hand side there on page uh twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and uh they were largely due uh your S or money.
Oh, my God, that's hilarious. I'm gonna leave that up there for a second. Oh, my God. That's terrible. Shame.
The uh total federal funding that you uh you get, and we have to.
And shame on me for laughing about it.
Make that up. We have to go to this compliance manual and make sure that you guys complied with everything that you said you would when you um made your assurances and applied for those programs.
Yeah, I feel like Philip Storm wouldn't, wouldn't let the school fuck around and steal money or embezzle. I just don't, I think he's that kinda guy.
Thirty.
But he is a dick, though.
Activity fund information. We do a real good audit on the activity fund, especially because, I mean, we do on everything, but we go into a little more depth on the activity fund, do the amount of cash that runs through there and the number of people that's associated with it, but uh your information there runs from page thirty to thirty-three, and it gives you a year's worth of information on every one of those activity fund subaccounts. Then if I could get you to look at page thirty-four, page thirty-four is a report on internal control and compliance. Um, when we come in to do an audit, we don't do an audit on internal control, but we come in, audit your financial, we do a financial statement audit, and you can't do a financial statement audit without looking at several of the internal controls, especially the ones that if you didn't comply with them, they could have material.
You don't audit the internal controls? Why? That's weird.
Uh, transactions. Uh, we run them through the system. We look at the approval processes. We look at the safeguard of the assets. We look real hard at segregation of duties, make sure that one person doesn't have, you know, more duties than they're supposed to have. That's what the internal controls consist of, and when we're doing that, if we find anything that leads us to believe that you have a deficiency in your internal controls, uh we bring it up to you on this letter on page thirty-four and page thirty-five, and uh it's kind of a long-winded letter there, but it'll basically tell you that uh we did not find any uh deficiencies in internal controls uh uh here at Owasso when we did the audit this year. Um, so it's a good clean opinion or a good clean report there. The second report on page thirty-six is a report that specifically addresses and only addresses your major federal programs. When I was talking about that we have to select is uh to get forty percent of the uh major or the total funding, and we go in and we run those compliance procedures, and this is a pretty big deal. I mean, uh, this takes up a good sizable part of, 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 of the audit, and uh we look at things like eligibility, uh whether the uh, of course, whether the uh expenditures are.
Spit it out.
Uh, we look at uh period of availability, those type of things, uh even goes into Davis Bacon Act a little bit, but this report on page thirty-six and thirty-seven and thirty-eight will tell you that we did our uh audit on the major federal programs here at the school, and we found them that Owasso was in compliance.
And Kenny, you missed it. It got real heated earlier. People were booing Margaret Coats. It was funny.
Page thirty-seven that we looked at the internal controls related to the administration of those uh federal programs and found that to be in place here as well. So in other words, y'all have done a real good job here. Um, we do have a page on the back here on page forty-one where we address things that we wanna address with the board that aren't significant deficiencies or aren't major uh uh compliance issues, and it, it'll basically tell you we didn't find anything. That doesn't mean necessarily that we didn't make any suggestions when we came out here, but we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, and when you're at these board meetings, they don't fuck around.
A very portable condition in audit report.
Yeah, you go back and watch it later. It's uh.
And I think that speaks very highly.
Yeah, it's something.
One thing I think that helps make, I mean, obviously, you've got a talented, a talented bunch of people in your financial administration, but uh they also are real good about calling us if they have a problem during the year, and I think that that.
And this is, this is weird, too. I, I mean, I've sat through audits and stuff before, but I've never heard.
And uh I went through that.
I think this guy is adding all of this other crap.
I will, uh if you.
Because of this situation.
I think we're, we're good, and we appreciate the brevity.
Frosty's been screaming at everybody. Frosty's been screaming. He lost his voice.
May I hear a motion to receive the report of the auditors?
You just received it. They approve everything, guys. They, they never don't approve something. It uh. Yes.
And Mr. Turpin.
Yeah, yes.
I've been screaming at protesters.
Regarding instructional materials to be purchased within the twenty-four, twenty-five adoption cycle. Math textbook adoption, math textbook adoption, and a math textbooks adoption. A lot of math textbooks.
Yes, sir. And this is a, the, the reason this is written like this is because these specific publishers.
The person doing the camera, that's, they don't normally do this back and forth crap.
If you looked at that first singage quote, you'll see that the dollar amount's just a little over five hundred thousand. So we wanted to make sure this was a pull-out item so that we could, I could share with you specifically, just because of the dollar amount of that specific quote. The other, um, as you scroll down to the other quotes uh on this item, you'll see that they're um much smaller. That first one is uh as I previously talked to you about, uh for K through four, uh everybody K through four. The rest of them are for specific individual textbooks um at Owasso High.
Again, if you just showed up, that, that there is Mark Officer. He was the principal of the high school. Um, well, not last year, the year before last, and he became the assistant superintendent. That's what he is now.
No other questions? I guess we'll go to item B.
Old man yelling at clouds. Well, Frosty's the one that was like, ah, I was sitting there watching the radio, and I was looking at you the whole time, and uh couldn't help but notice that you were laughing the whole time. Like, yeah, man, you just played, I have resting dick face at the board meeting. It was funny.
All right, the next two items are for McGraw-Hill, and the reason they are their own separate items is because McGraw does require a signature, and so asking for you to approve the purchase of the pre-calculus texts for next, for the next adoption.
Pretty boilerplate stuff here. That's Stephanie Rutman talking.
For the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year at a cost of twenty-one thousand dollars, thirty, twenty-one thousand, thirty-two dollars and ten cents plus shipping of eight hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six cents or three point nine percent as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute.
Stephanie Rutman's the blonde.
Ms. Mills. Yeah.
No, I can. I, they banned me uh from school. I sued them in federal court. They lost twice. The judge undid my ban, so then they were stuck with me. And they banned me from all school property.
Again, grades five through, uh basically five through ten, some, some juniors, of course, take algebra two as well. Um, it's a little bit more than the first quote because there's one additional grade level, basically. McGraw-Hill um does require a signature, and also this is a significant purchase, a little over sixty thousand, so we wanted to.
That's crazy. Six hundred thousand dollars for math books. And what's wild is that uh the last year, they forced computers on every child, and they didn't have textbooks. Like their math teacher would, would pull up, literally pull up YouTube channels to explain the math. Like the teacher, I, they're, they're like placeholders nowadays. It's sad. Let the teachers teach. That's what I say.
Item D, board to consider and take possible action on the agreement with Joseph Roberts for hypnosis performance.
Yeah, and what's funny is Brent put his hands on me. Yet they, they, because I said fucking, the policy's fucking bullshit, Brent, y'all need to fix it. They're like, oh, that's verbal harassment. And then two days later, they, she sends me a letter in the mail saying I was banned.
So again, bringing him back this year, and and he'll perform a little bit different timing. He'll be uh on the same day as the senior picnic there in the PAC.
Well, for things like math, I think that's a terrible idea. The YouTube stuff should be supplemental, not the go-to.
Motion made in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yeah.
Mrs. Rutman.
Yeah.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Section A, District Services, Mr. Kerner. A, board to consider and take possible action on a waterline easement with the city of Owasso to move an existing waterline easement at a cost of zero dollars as outlined in the attachment and authorize.
Interesting. Wow, they don't usually get free shit.
Part of the track project, so.
Oh, uh, so they, they took it out of the bond. They, there was like, God, it was millions and millions of dollars for a bond to upgrade the track.
You also have probably when the uh wellness center.
Yes, I mean, possible.
A line coming in from the north, so those two connect. We're moving the waterline over toward basically where that alley, the road is now. So um you'll see in there, there are several attachments. Two of those are to uh vacate the two existing easements, so we're going, we're vacating those. The new one is to create a new waterline easement, and it's just gonna be one. So we'll create a loop for the city, uh so they'll have a waterline easement that runs all the way through. Um, and then the, the last attachment there is actually where we sign it and document. So really, all we're doing is, was take, we're taking an existing.
Neil Kessler, I do not. Neil Kessler stood up in front of the board meeting and just flat out lied about me, literally just lied. He knew he was lying, and he did it anyway, right in front of everybody.
It's under parts of other roads and.
So I, I've got nothing for that guy. Neil the Weasel Kessler. Well, they're, they were upgrading it. There was a lot of stuff that they had added in that they were upgrading the weight room and stuff for the gym facility. I mean, it was, it was a bunch of stuff. I actually took a tour around the school with Zach Duffield, who's the athletics director. And he pointed out to us what they were changing. It made, it made sense to me. Like I was surprised at how ragged their gym actually was, given the amount of resources they have. Well, it was, it was all part of the same bond. They, there was a bunch of things they, that they were fixing.
Mr. Rutman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
They even have medical staff at the school. Like, you know, nurses and shit for the kids to, just athletic, uh, medical staff.
At a cost of approximately twenty five thousand dollars as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract. Okay, so as you know, this year was our first year to have school employees that were school security officers. We had, we started with five positions and we've had some turnover in those throughout the year. Currently we're down to.
Yeah, no, my school had jack squat too.
Calendar and how do you do that with so many certain days left in the school year in summer, trying to hire someone.
This was something they were talking about at the end of last school year, right before I left. They, they were going to hire armed security guards. On top of the SRO, but a lot of good they do if you don't call them to come in and do something.
Uh, we started checking around and PhD, they have experience with schools and they're security officers, all complete certified, so same qualifications that we would expect. So we would like to do this.
Yes, Mr. Officer used to be the high school principal. Yeah, two years ago, I believe. Yes, last year was his first year as assistant superintendent. That was Paul Cross's idea was to employ, you know, veterans or retired law enforcement officers.
That's ultimately what we want. We want our guys in there building those relationships and being consistent in our hallways. And so.
I don't actually agree with, with employing armed security at the school. I just don't. I, I'm live. What's up?
Few days of the school.
What's up?
Uh, we would like to, to do this.
Uh, she should be in the room. I don't know. I don't know. Do you need something? No. Okay. I'll, I'll worry at you when I'm done.
Agree to the contract with PhD security for two security officers for the remainder of the twenty three, twenty four school year at a cost of approximately twenty five thousand dollars as outlined in the attachment and.
Wait, two security officers for twenty five thousand dollars? What the hell? How the hell do you employ two security officers for twenty five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Mr. England.
Hey, what's up, Lane? Thanks for showing up, buddy. That's bottom of the barrel kind of security services there. Yeah, we're paying them three bucks an hour.
Thank you. So.
That's Phillip Storm CFO.
Revenue will be outpacing expenditures and that's the case for this report. As you can see in the general fund, our revenue through the end of February, almost fifteen million dollars more than expenditures for the same time.
I'd pay that dude to do my taxes and shit.
So that's not uncommon.
Without question.
We have a large chunk of our revenue that comes in January through April through property taxes. And our expenditures are somewhat backloaded because we have a lot of summer payroll that gets run at the very end of the year. So we need to be in this position now so that we can finish the year where we want to finish. So this report tells us that, that where we want to be in the building fund, you can also see that revenue is a little bit ahead of expenses. Uh, there's some new source of revenue in the building fund this year.
Yes, I'm on Facebook as well. Um, Facebook on Loudmouth, YouTube on Loudmouth and YouTube on Liberal Loudmouth. I agree, Lane.
I won't be shocked if it doesn't come until after June thirtieth, but we'll, we'll see. And also in child nutrition, again, slightly ahead of expenses, our revenue is running a little bit ahead of expenses to this point, which is again, right.
Any questions?
Brent might have one. I'm Frosty. Oh yeah, it's, you're probably on Loudmouth. The other one's on Liberal Loudmouth or something like that. So patent modem is the, is who that guy worked, that other guy worked for.
Yes. So this would be the contract for the audit of the current.
How much did you say? What's the cost? Hundred thousand?
We're required to have a contract for the audit. We're required to submit a document to the state department of education verifying that we have that contract in place before the end of the year. And this contract that you have represents just a few hundred dollars more than the fee for last year, but very close to the fee for the audit that was presented to you.
It's crazy.
I make a motion. We approve the contract and letter of engagement with patent and Odom CPAs for the audit of the financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four at a cost of twenty one thousand dollars.
Oh, twenty one thousand. Okay. God. Twenty one thousand dollars for an audit. And these people never try to negotiate better rates, by the way. In fact, they got irritated with Brent who tried to do that when it came to construction stuff. They weren't having it. They were like, just give them the money.
So we had a contract with another provider and that person has left us. And so this is a contract to get us through the remainder of the year. If you have any more detailed questions, I would certainly defer to Mr. Duffield.
For those of you that are just showing up, the comments that you're probably coming to watch are going to be towards the end. It could be another ten, twenty, thirty minutes. Who knows? Depends on how long it takes them. I mean, it could be right after this.
Motion made in second row call please.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Yes. I bet Frosty is upset that he can't scream at the protesters.
Vote to convene in executive session for the purposes of discussing vote to convene into.
Spit it out, Brent.
It's in there twice. Vote to convene executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools site administrators listed on the attachment for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Oh shit.
Section three oh seven B one.
Make a motion to vote into executive session.
So at this point, they, you know, when they deal with personnel issues, they go to, um, I'm going to pull up the agenda real quick. And we'll look and see who exactly. Uh, cause they're, they're basically going to pause everything. So matter of fact, let's go through this together. Let me share this tab. Uh, can y'all see this? Okay. So this is the agenda. Let me, let me scroll in as best I can. If you notice these links here, these links are a direct result of me. I actually asked them to start posting the items that they were talking about because you'd get to the board meeting and they'd be talking about stuff and you'd have absolutely no, no idea what they were talking about. Uh, and they would just vote on it. So, um, school site administrator listed on the attachment. Oh, that, oh, how interesting is that? They, uh, they didn't, oh, it says Dr. Coats. So maybe this is, uh, this is coming up for her. Her review for whether or not they're going to keep her on as, you know, to renew her contract for the next school year. Okay. So let me go back now. Let's share that. Uh, but yeah, that, that was actually Margaret Coats that, that accepted my lobby to them to add the documents themselves and I, I mean, credit to her because, you know, that was a great thing because you would, I came in there one day and they voted, it was like seventy five thousand some dollars and I had no clue what they were even talking about. They didn't really discuss it. They had already discussed it before they got to the board meeting and they were just like, yeah, let's spend it. And we're like, what the hell is this for? So I asked them and, and she put it on there. So I, you know, good on her for that, but. So yeah, the, and, and unfortunately they turned the, uh, they turned the mic off when it goes into executive session. They could be there for a while or they could be there for 10 minutes, but I have a feeling they'll approve Margaret Coats as superintendent for next year if she's the one they're talking about. That for some reason, these people are just shoved right up her ass. I mean, they love her. She was about to cost the school hundreds of thousands of dollars and they were like, yes, please. We want more of that. And Amy Fitchner never had these kinds of problems with her. I mean, the board didn't like her, but if, oh yeah, yeah, look at that. Uh, one second. Let's see. Yeah, I wish Ron was able to come on here, uh, cause he, you know, he, he'd give insight too, cause I, I'd been to nearly every board meeting for like three years. Um, so if you have any questions about how these things go or any of the people, I'm happy to talk to you about what I know about it, but the, I mean, the school generally is a, is a good school in terms of academics. But it's, there's also a lot of very wealthy kids. And when you have that plus other, you know, poor kids, you usually end up with little shitheads that, you know, bully and, and what have you. So you get a lot of, um, people getting mistreated. It's, uh, it's kind of unfortunate, but it is what it is. So this is an interesting thing. Margaret Coats was the assistant superintendent under Amy Fitchner. And in two thousand and twenty one, I believe it was, or at the end of it, um, Amy Fitchner was basically fired by the board. And when they did that, and it came out of nowhere, right? And when they, cause, uh, Margaret Coats retired. She retired. And then Amy Fitchner was still the superintendent. And then they got another assistant superintendent, Dr. Costaldi, great lady. I really, I really enjoyed her. She was, she was, she was only there for about a month or two. And then in comes Mark Officer and they, they brought Margaret Coats in as the interim, brought her out of retirement. So to me, I feel like this was something they had in the works for some time. It was like a coup, Margaret Coats coup. Because this happened right after Stephanie Rutman got on there and Stephanie Rutman and Margaret Coats are like two peas in a damn pod. So yeah, they, they kicked her ass out of there. Uh, I heard, I believe it was Brent that told me, Brent England had told me that Amy Fitchner just wouldn't share information with them. She would hide stuff from us. That's what they said. Uh, I don't know if that's true, um, but they, they sure love Margaret Coats and they brought her in immediately. I don't even think they, I don't even think they really put out for applications for anybody else other than Margaret Coats. Um, I'd have to, it's probably an open records request that I should put in, um, to, to figure that out. Cause I, I think the board knew they were going to bring Margaret Coats in. Um, but she's, I mean, she's real, she's real good at that. You know, fluffing you up and making you feel like you're, you're awesome, I guess. Like Dana Prieto is a guy who's running for senate, real far right wing guy. And, uh, yeah, like the, the OSSBA and all those, they came out against Dana Prieto. Cause he was going to come after the schools. Then the moment he gets elected, oh, she just loves this guy. She brings him in, gives him a tour, goes to the Capitol, you know, tours around and takes all these pictures with Dana Prieto. Just, I mean, immediately this happened and I'm like, really? I sent Dana a message. I'm like, please don't fall for this lady's bullshit. Like she is one conniving little something. I mean, she's like, like for example, the, those kids getting up there and, and I hate to say this because, because they're kids and you know, it's not their fault. Uh, but them letting that girl get up there and talk about how great and wonderful Owasso has been and she was so accepted and inclusive. They did this on purpose. I mean, anybody with two brain cells can see just based, make a deduction that they did that on purpose to try and soften the blow. They did the same shit during the board meeting when, uh, they reversed that policy that, that I was pushing them to change. Um, you know, and brought in the news media and made a big deal about it, changed the way that the comments were laid out so that me and Ron had to give our, our speeches to the board in front of all of the parents and stuff that were there because usually they would do like acknowledgements first. And then they would dismiss all of the parents that had showed up to see, like, you know, the basketball team had showed up there. They would do all that stuff at the beginning. But this one, they, they changed it and moved it after the public comments, right? And they moved the non-agenda comments to the front. And they did it on purpose so that everybody could see this child giving a speech about how terrible it was that those graphic novels were removed. And then here comes the asshole, me making a speech and then Ron and then another child right after, um, you know, complaining about the graphic novels. It, it's all, it's choreographed, you know, it's, it's, it's all on purpose. She's, she's, she's not stupid. Exactly. Retirement. Exactly. Yeah. I mean, she's too young to have retired, but she did. And then she sat around and did nothing until Amy Fitchner was gone. I'm sure Fitchner knows, but Fitchner's, uh, she would never say. I tried to get Costaldi to explain to me why in the hell they got rid of her. Uh, because I, I once said Costaldi should be running that school instead of Margaret Coats and within a month, Costaldi was gone. You know, I, I'm like, I, I, I feel bad if, if like Margaret Coats was pissed that I'd said that. So she had to get rid of her. Or if she knew that Mark Officer would be a lapdog. I mean, I, I like Mark Officer, but you know, he's a, he, he plays the game, as it were. Uh, you know, I, I don't know what Fitchner does now. I haven't been able to find any information about it. I think she may have retired. She was getting up there in years. I mean, she was, she was pretty old, but it, it was actually funny because Fitchner and I, I liked Fitchner at first until just every time you talk to her on the phone about, you know, anything. Mr. Ryland, I respect you as a parent. She said that to me so many times and I'm like, look lady, don't talk to me like I'm an idiot. Just, just talk to me like I'm a person, please. But just please. And I just started to realize how fake she was. And so I'm like, you know what? We should probably get rid of her. And, uh, and then that was when COVID happened. And now, so now she's getting it for both sides. She's getting it from the anti-maskers and from me. Uh, and from other people, um, because she tried to ride the fence with COVID kind of. And, uh, anyway, it didn't work out for her, but, uh, what, she came up to me at a board meeting and she's like, Mr. Ryland, I don't know if you remember me or not, but I'm still the superintendent. Cause I told her that I was working to get her out of there. And she comes up with that fake ass smile of hers and she says that to me. And I just look at her, I was like, you know, I, I know who you are. Literally the next month, they had fired her. I'm like, damn. But I didn't realize Margaret Coats was going to be taking over and I didn't realize what a shit show it was going to turn into after that. If I'd have known that, God. I, I'd never thought I'd be wanting Fitcher back, but, but I left there. I mean, that place is just those, those people are, if you're not part of their crew, you know, uh, cause, oh, Costaldi, C A S T A L D I. Uh, she was just a, a person that came out of nowhere. She hadn't worked for the school whenever they had brought her on as assistant superintendent, uh, in the interim. Uh, you know, when they retired, uh, Fitchner and then brought Margaret Coats in his interim, the, she came out of nowhere and I don't know what she's doing now. I had never met her before and she hadn't worked at the school. So I. So I, I, I don't know. But it might've been because of her. See, she, Castaldi would talk to you like you were a human being, right? She wouldn't like talk down to you. She wouldn't give you the whole, you know, bullshit, you know, that you, you can tell when somebody's get feeding you a lot of BS, you know, she, she didn't do that. And she would say, I'm, you know, okay, I'm gonna look into it. I'll get back to you. And she would get back to you. Um, where, uh, Margaret Coats is one of those. So maybe that's what it was. Uh, maybe, maybe there were some disagreements that Castaldi had, cause like I told people, uh, Margaret Coats is a control freak. She is an absolute control freak. She's, uh, she's. I don't know. I mean, I, I, I guess to keep everybody in line, she might be a good drill sergeant. Um, kill them with the smile, I guess. But no, it was, uh, it's quite an experience with those people. Some of it's good. I mean, I, you know, I like a lot of the people that are up there. I got to know them really well. Not everybody in Owasso is bad, but. Um, Tiffany Cooper, for example. Every time I'd go there to talk to her, she just had this look on her face like, and maybe that's just the way she looked. I don't know, but I, I always felt like she would just didn't wanna talk to me or really any parent. Um, she's, uh, I've gotta sit through this, ah, fuck. He just wants to talk about things and I don't wanna do anything. But I, I remember that time when I printed off the pages of that book. And Mark Officer went up there with me to the high school, cause I told Mark, I was like, I want her to see this. Cause yesterday she just told me I wasn't allowed to go in the library. And that she wasn't gonna go in there and find the book. She wasn't gonna, you know, do any of that. So I wanted her to see it and she flips through a couple of pages. The first thing she says is, ugh. And I'm like, yeah, ugh, why do you think I'm here? And Mark says, uh, you don't have to look through those if you don't want to. And I'm like, wait, wait, wait. You're her boss and because you don't wanna like get, you know, hit with the sexual harassment charge, making your employee look at these sexual images of, you know, penises and ejaculation and all that crap. It was like, but it's okay. It was okay for the kids. Makes total sense. Crazy. And, and people still shit on me for, for going after that book, but I'm like, look. Yeah, you, you showing pictures of dicks and, and tits and stuff in the school, like what? Come on, go to the public library and do that. That's, that's not something that they should have at the damn school. If you can't tell a story without showing penises and, and boobies, then then don't tell your story, you know? But they fixed it, so it won't be there anymore. I haven't seen any comments, uh, to those that are just showing up. This executive session could go on for a while. Uh, a lot of times what they'll do is buy everybody food. They'll cater like sub sandwiches and shit and get these big old platters and they'll go into the executive session. They'll sit in there and eat and just, eh. Cause they, you gotta think this is an opportunity that they get to talk amongst themselves and nobody knows what they're saying. Because it's not public information. And I feel like a lot of school boards will do this and, and violate the Open Meetings Act and talk about things that they're not supposed to. Like I imagine that they're in there discussing. Uh, what's about to happen, which is the comments. Um, that are gonna be made at the school. I imagine that's gonna come up, even though it's not supposed to. Yeah, we'll see. I mean, they aren't the most ethical people in the world. Um, I mean, they violated my constitutional rights and then stood up there and lied about it, so. You know, I, I wouldn't put it past them to do other things, but, but yeah, oh, here we go. Here we go. So right after this is the non-agenda comments. Um, so they'll do new business. They'll be like, does anybody have new business? And I've never seen them do that. And then they'll. Okay, public comments, and I'm sure Brent is gonna browbeat everybody. He is kind of a dick. I, I, I do still like Brent though. Uh, he's actually up for reelection this year. Oh, here we go. Not in executive session.
During the executive session, board members discussed the employment of Owassa Public Schools, school site administrators listed on the attachment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
They didn't give the attachment. Oh, that is some bullshit. They didn't even say who it was they were talking about. There's no attachment.
Yes, thank you. I would, uh, humbly request that you approve the, uh, administrators on the attached list.
Margaret Coats.
For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Make a motion, we approve the, um, administrators listed on the attachment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Jane and second, roll call please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Second.
Mrs. Rutman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Item twelve, new business?
There is none.
Go to item thirteen, comments from the public regarding non-agenda.
Oh, here we go. Oh, they cut the audio. They cut the audio. Are you kidding me? They cut the damned audio. Oh, he's like, we're having technical difficulties. That, see what I'm talking, see what I'm saying? If it doesn't come back, that was no accident. Why? I just, I accidentally pushed the button. Oh, I'm sorry. It's like the body cam footage that just doesn't, the body cam footage just didn't work. Okay, here we go. I have a feeling they're gonna do that again. Yeah, they won't even respond to the comments, so don't expect them to. They won't. They won't. Model behavior, or things. Well, why don't you lead by example, sir? Lead by example. Too hard for you? There we go. Okay.
Good evening. Um, I would, I just wanna start, uh, with all the protesters that came out tonight. I see you. Thank you for coming. Uh, my name is Madison Hutton. I'm a two thousand nineteen Owasso High School graduate and a proud member of the LGBTQIA+ community. I stand before you today, like many others, with a heavy heart and a pressing call for action. I will not be talking about the case as it is active and ongoing. That being said. The recent tragedy that has befallen our community and school has shaken us to our core. The brutal assault on NEX Benedict on our school premises and the subsequent lack of adequate response is a stain on our conscience that cannot be ignored. I do not have the pleasure of knowing NEX Benedict. However, men of, many of us have been NEX Benedict at the hands of Owasso Public Schools. Nexus's story is not isolated. Many students, especially those of the LGBTQ community, have come forward with their own disturbing stories about their experiences with the school officials since Nexus passing. This just goes to show that Nexus's story is not an isolated incident. It is a reflection of a larger problem. A problem of systemic bullying, discrimination and lack of accountability. For far too long, you have allowed bullies to roam the hallways, teachers and students alike. You have reiterated the notion that if a cisgendered white individual wanted to wreak havoc on others, they are able to do so without fear of any major repercussions. For far too long, you have failed to hold individuals and institutions accountable for their role in perpetuating this culture of cruelty within your walls. This is not just a failure of your duty to protect our students, but a gross injustice that demands accountability and change. In the wake of this tragedy, instead of stepping up to address the systemic issues at play, Owasso Public School officials have resorted to victim blaming publicly, which is a familiar role for all individuals and minority groups.
Yeah.
If you were bullied so badly, why didn't you fight back? And in the next.
Why didn't you report it?
Wouldn't have fought back, this never would have happened.
Right, are you?
Of your creation. We will not allow this to continue. We will not allow Nexus's memory to be tarnished by negligence and indifference. We must ask you, where does it end? Who will be held responsible for ensuring the safety and wellbeing of our students?
It won't be Margaret.
Protective protocols not being followed diligently? And when will you, as our trusted school officials, put an end to bullying and discrimination by all students? Today, I bring forth a petition signed by disturbed and enraged citizens across the nation, many of which are in this room.
Get rid of Tiffany.
We demand that Owasso Public Schools erect a memorial park bench in Nexus's honor, placed prominently on the school grounds and funded entirely by the school district. This bench will serve as a lasting tribute to Nexus's story, as their story will not be silenced or forgotten. Our demands do not stop there. We demand accountability. We demand transparency. We demand an end to bigotry and discrimination within our schools. And most importantly, we demand action. Nexus's tragic fate serves as a stark reminder of the consequences of inaction. We cannot allow history to repeat itself. Make no mistake, bullying is not just a harmless rite of passage for students. It does not simply toughen our skin. It is a scourge that can have devastating, life-altering consequences. And in Nexus's case, it cost them their life. We owe it to NEX and to every student that walks within our school doors to create a safer, more inclusive environment. We owe it to NEX to continue to say their name. Let us come together as, not just as educators and students, but as advocates for change. Let us stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ community and reaffirm our commitment to protecting all students, regardless of race, gender identity and sexual orientation. Now I direct this to the young people who are attending tonight. You have an opportunity to be better, to unlearn bigotry, to relearn acceptance. I refuse to accept that this is who we are. We are powerful because we have survived. Nexus Benedict, Nexus Benedict's memory will live on through our actions and let us honor them by ensuring that their death was not in vain. Hope will never be silent. Let us rise to the occasion. Let us stand together as one community and in one voice, say that bullying will not be tolerated in our schools. Thank you.
I'm all about the bench. Not that that fixes anything, but. This is a reminder.
Our next speaker is Nicole Gray.
I think there's like eight speakers, which they don't normally do. Normally it's, it's, they only allow like thirty minutes of comment total. No, she's pissed.
As a queer, non-binary Oklahoma native, I'd like to begin my address by stating how unequivocally grateful I am.
Were they?
Have not attended Owasso Public Schools. Anything to go by, then Owasso Public Schools would have been a death sentence for me. I barely survived public school as it is twenty years ago, when I didn't even have the terminology to articulate my identity correctly. It is incredibly disheartening to me to see how little the American public school systems have changed their actual real life.
Yeah, it's so bad.
You may do lip service to anti-bullying policies. You may pat yourselves on the back for having, quote, better policies in place than in the past, but rarely do we see any real measurable action taken, especially when the victims are queer students. I had to not just change schools, but move.
To be fair, they would have done this with anybody.
At my old school, it didn't matter how many times I reported the bullying or how many teachers saw it, or even if I was being actively stalked by another student. There was never anything they could do, or it was their word against yours, or worse of all, was I sure I wasn't just being too sensitive?
Right.
Deserve so much better. It was your job to protect them, to ensure that their learning environment was safe and you failed. There is no denying that fact. You have failed in your task. You have allowed the prejudice and hate so sadly prevalent in what should be a neutral and dare I say sacred place of learning and education to end the life of one of your students. With the official response to the attack itself boiling down to a tepid and apathetic, seek medical help. Oh, and the advice to seek medical help was given out of an abundance of caution.
Yeah.
How incredibly gracious of you. Yet at the same time, so miserly with your actions as to not have protected them in the first place. As the saying goes, actions speak louder than words. I don't give a tinker's damn, as my grandmother would say, about what the school's official policies against bullying are, because at the end of the day, what matters isn't whether or not you say you're against bullying. Rather what you do.
Yep.
All the anti-bullying policies in the world don't matter a single broat if you refuse to take action and allow the behavior to not only continue, but to escalate to full-blown physical violence. And I know what no small number of you are thinking right now, that bullying is just a fact of life. No.
Yeah, it is.
Bullying is a choice that people make, a deliberate behavior that people choose to engage in. It is not some instinctive drive that must be obeyed like hunger or thirst. And it is entirely possible to erase it if we actually put in the simple effort to do something about it. To teach our kids something valuable and lifelong, that other people deserve to be treated with care and respect, just like we wish to be ourselves. Does the golden rule ring any bells?
Absolutely.
Do better. Be better. Be, give these kids a chance, not just to survive your schools, but to thrive in them. Queer kids deserve safe and happy lives just as much as the straight ones do. If you listened to me, thank you.
They didn't. That, for the, I, I'm, I'm, these people are spitting one ear out the other. They don't give you shit.
Our next speaker is Suzie Yuvan.
They're just like Tiffany, it was, oh God, we gotta sit there and listen to this person. I'm glad they banned to the board there.
I am a proud.
Just laying back.
My personal experience that I've dealt with bullying with my own teenage son through Owasso since last year of moving here. Where do I begin? Getting, gonna try to do this, um.
You got this.
Where do I begin? Him coming home telling me he was called a fag today, that he was called gay for having an earring, even being degraded by another teen and the teacher knew, but didn't report it anything to the principal or myself, yet told that kid's parents. This certain kid has been telling my son to call him daddy, that my child was his bitch. To me, that's something I should know. Also, no repercussions for the bully. My child doesn't fit the social norm because he wants to just be himself.
Oh my God.
Still continues, since speaking up about our experiences, so many of their parents and people have stepped up with stories that I can't even imagine. Including of a first grader at Bailey, that she has expressed, her daughter has been tormented with scratches. And what does a school do? They victim blame her. Our children are hurting. They are all screaming for help. When will you hear them? I don't want another beautiful soul taken too soon. There has to be a change.
Oh, I know, right?
These children do not fit your social norm of others do, does not mean that their life is any less than yours. And also, I have a question. This fight took place and those two, those students were in in-school suspension. Where was the supervision? That's what scares me to send my kid to school, is that they were in school suspension and nothing was done. Nothing.
But we broke it up within two minutes.
And I'll keep speaking up about the bullying until it stops. And if the school can get tired of me, cause I've already filed police reports through Rogers County and I'll keep doing it. But I cannot allow my child to keep getting bullied.
Are right there with.
Y'all won't stand up and say anything for him, I will. I will be his voice. I will be any other child's voice. And that's all I have to say, because honestly, y'all can sit there. And I think a few of y'all are taking this in. But honestly, as a parent. But honestly, as a parent, you don't know what it's like to step in our shoes with a child that doesn't fit the social norm, that you are scared to death that you're gonna come home and honestly, they're gonna take their own life because they're called gay and faggot and they don't understand. It's not fair for them. They deserve to go to school, they deserve to learn, just like everybody else. And what, there needs to be more consequences. Because for this bully to degrade my son for a year and call him his bitch for a year, and I will say it because if the teenager said it, I will. That is not okay.
Say it.
And the teacher knew it. And the teacher let it go.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I look at it as Nexus could have been my child. Because y'all didn't do your job. You didn't do your job. You wanna say you did your job, or you don't? Because until you come home and your kid's on the floor crying because he doesn't know what else to do, because there's so many emotions, because he can't even walk down the hallway without getting shoved or pushed because of all these bullies. And y'all won't do anything about it. So that is mine, that is mine. When is it gonna stop? Because us parents are fearful for our children to be in your care.
I feel every bit of what she's saying.
Uh, next speaker, Leanne Wilson.
And the, the person she thinks is listening would be Stephanie Rutman and probably Margaret, because they will sit there and go and put on a big smile, but it's all fake. Fake, fake, fake.
Hi, I'm Leanne Wilson, and I'm a mother of three children in Owasso schools. And I'm also a member of the LGBTQ plus community. I wanna first start off with my son. Um, my son has been bullied all year, where nothing has been done. Um, we've had, we've made reports, all that stuff, and nothing's been done.
Yeah, they, they don't come down hard enough on bullying.
Has been taken serious until now after a student's death, which brought the light on the community with the bullying and how it's being ignored and not taken seriously. It took a stu- student dying for y'all to see something is wrong, when it's been a huge issue for a long time. I've had many mothers, students, previous students come to me to discuss with me all the bullying that they've been subjected to. And it's been going on for a very, very long time. Um, I've had a mother discuss to me that she had a sixth grader, the sixth grader was being bullied. Uh, they brought it up to the council.
That's Eric Nantua.
Um, nothing was done.
Oh wait, she said sixth grade, never mind, that's Roberts.
Um, the parents feared for the child's safety, so they didn't know what to do, so they removed their children or their child from the bus. Another mom reported, um,
See what the fuck?
her son. Uh, also went to the sixth grade center. After three years, three years of bullying, nothing was done. She removed her child from Owasso schools.
Wow. She should have come up and gave a speech.
My question to you guys is, what is zero tolerance policy?
It means, here's the rug and let's put it underneath it.
And I have the proper definition. And it means a policy of giving the most severe punishment possible to every person who commits a crime or breaks a rule.
Yeah.
Are you guys following that?
No.
Because you're not.
No.
Because if you guys were following that,
And this one's on the teachers, right, right there. Because they see it.
Worry going home with my children crying, they get picked on because I'm a lesbian mother. Like, how fair is that to my child? I have two little ones that are in school right now, and I'm scared. I keep hearing horrible things.
Right, and then you get in trouble for it.
The seventh grade center, the eighth grade, and the high school, because I'm here and I'm seeing it. But the thing is, zero tolerance, like, what is that? You guys don't stand up to your guys' policy, so why put it in your policy?
Cause, cause it makes them look better.
It is not up to the bully's parents to keep
Yep.
check of my children, to keep my children safe. When my children walk into your schools,
It's the school's responsibility.
to keep my children safe. And that's not happening.
In loco parentis.
Look what's going on right now.
The school is in loco parentis.
So I think you guys really need to
And they're shitty parents.
either taking that zero tolerance policy out of your guys' policy, because it's not there, it's not being followed. Either take that out, or stand up for it.
Yep.
Be about it. You know, I get told all the time, it's all talk until you take action. I'm a person that lives up to that, I take the action. But the thing is, is you guys today need to take that action. And our kids need to be safe. And I do not feel that my children are safe in your guys' schools. And I will continue to fight for that. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Allowing her to speak. Yeah. Cause otherwise, only three people would be allowed to speak. At least they opened it up for more comments.
Next speaker, Erin Horst. Hope I didn't mispronounce your name.
Todd Brent, read the damn room, buddy. God.
I'll speak quickly, I have a lot to say. Uh, first, thank you for your time, I've not addressed this board since COVID. Uh, at that time, we were pretty heavy odds, and at that time, I also made some statements that I feel were right, but my delivery may have been unfair to many of you. I have made many apologies and amended many of those relationships, many of you have actually supported me in things outside the school system.
Fuck them.
I appreciate that.
Let them have it, sir.
If you still have ill feelings, I welcome those conversations to mend those relationships as well.
Just don't do it in the parking lot.
I know that most people are quick to come up here and stand and tell you when they are mad at you, but not when you've done a good job. I know most, if not all of you, have received death threats along with rude hateful emails, phone calls, and I have listened to you get bullied here tonight. I thought we would have learned better since COVID.
They're getting bullied?
As I stated, I have spoken to this administration.
What the fuck?
It is not fair of us to come here and complain and not give credit where credit is due. I say all of this to say, I would like to commend the administration for the handling of this current situation.
Wow.
Very intense, emotionally, legally, politically. Uh, and this administration as a whole has done a fantastic job in keeping us informed about the things we need to know, keeping
Uh, let me see if I can.
at times, or at this time, and dismantling information, or dismantling any fault.
Is that better?
You have also continued to support and protect our children in countless ways. Many people in this community and in this room have spoken against the school in regards to anti-bullying policy. I asked the people, what would you have the school system do? I've actually not heard a solution in the room tonight. Uh, you can't put cam- cameras in bathrooms, other schools have used bathroom monitors and been accused of sexual misconduct. Private bathrooms are not only expensive, but the sheer privacy alone leads to the risk of on
Okay, then that's as, that's as far as I can get it.
As a former foster parent educator, I can tell you that bullying is learned. In many cases, I have personally seen that a child that bullies is often living in a bad situation at home. They may have been abused verbally, physically, mentally, uh, sexually, or even sexually. They may have had an incarcerated parent or may have been a foster kid. They may be living in drug-filled environments, the list goes on. The school's system cannot stop kids from saying mean and hurtful things. Keep in mind that even though these people are tall, they are still just kids. I agree that bullying should not be tolerated in our schools, but you can't look at just the child, or just the side of a child that identifies with a specific demographic and assume that they were the victim. We don't know what really happened in the bathroom that day, or who bullied who. We have only heard one side of the story and none of us were there.
Well, sir, since you think that they're being bullied, the, the school board is being bullied here tonight. I don't give a shit what you say.
That's bullying.
Wow.
We were living in a way
That person shouldn't have said that.
assaulted by three students from the school we were visiting for being
Those people need to just shut their mouths and let him speak.
School and the school administrators pulled the kids off of me, so they were firsthand witnesses.
He's pissing me off too, bud.
The school and the local police department
Those people shouldn't do that.
One of the kids was actually eighteen years old and had graduated the year prior. None of them were disciplined or arrested. That is what I call poor policy and discrimination. We are all passionate about education. I hate that we've had to put that to the side to deal with this situation. We should not have to be saddened by the loss of a child in our community. We should not have to be in the national spotlight over false information about what may or may not be a hate crime. We should not have to deal with Westboro Baptist Church and their preaching, preaching about a false hate-filled
You wouldn't have been if the school had done their job, buddy.
That is not the one true God, the God that loves us all, all of his children. He may disagree with you, but he still loves you.
Oh my God, shut the fuck up with that.
Regardless of your sins, we are all sinners, including myself, but we can all go to heaven. Our school administration
I'm sorry, Maury, it was hard to, I don't know what they said.
Unprecedented situation, you have all risen to the
I think they called him a fascist.
And I, and I've done a fantastic job. I look forward and pray to the, pray for the day that we can all put this behind us, so you can continue to focus on what you came here to do. Educate the young minds of the city of Owasso. Please keep up the good work. Thank you again for your time, God bless.
Wow. Shame on you, sir. People are class. It's, I wonder who paid this motherfucker?
Our final speaker, Kailin Durant.
This'll probably be another pro-school one.
My name is Kailin Durant, T-H-M.
Oh, probably not.
Request, and with the help of a concerned Owasso parent, I'm here speaking on behalf of Oklahoma Pride Alliance. I assume this request came because, came because our organization stands as hope in the midst of such a heavy time for Oklahoma. The responsibility of that hope is not one we take lightly. However, what is most important is that to us LGBTQIA+ kids in Oklahoma feel hope. When we look at the statistics, we quickly realize why that hope is important, especially now. A national survey on LGBTQ youth tells us that forty-five percent of queer youth seriously consider attempting suicide. And one in five trans or nine, non-binary youth actually attempted suicide
After this, I'm gonna go back and get that guy's name.
And that number goes up when we talk specifically about black, brown,
Somebody.
indigenous queer youth. Additionally, thirty-seven percent of trans and non-binary youth reported that they have been physically threatened or harmed due to their gender identity. Seventy-one percent of trans and non-binary youth reported experiencing discrimination based on their gender identity. Impressionable. We often hear kids are impressionable. The impressions we plan, we plan to make for the children of Oklahoma is that they are seen and supported no matter who they are, where they come from, how they identify, or who they love. My impression growing up was being from Oklahoma, you can be an astronaut, like Shannon Lucid, a world-class prima ballerina like the Five Moons depicted in a
It's possible, but I don't know, but I'll find out.
Teacher, nurse, farmer, rancher, a Grammy award-winning artist, a Tony award-winning actor, a person that rushes, rushes towards disaster like Oklahomans did on April nineteenth, nineteen ninety-five. Or serve our country to protect people we'll never meet, like the estimated three hundred thousand Oklahomans who have served our armed forces. Oklahoma is for everyone, y'all means all. That's the impression I got, and I want every student to know. School is where we make the impression that not everyone looks or thinks like you. But we sit in the same classrooms, each eat the same lunch, eat the same food at lunch, work as a team on the court or field, in choir or band. But those impressions come from the adults, the board, staff, teachers, coaches. You know, the golden rule, walk a mile in someone else's shoes, and so on. Life during school is hard enough with discovering what the world has to offer. The people and places we only thought were in books, movies, and TV, then discovering the challenges of how we get to those places and meet or be those people. It's hard enough. So let's leave the impression that no matter where they come from, who they are, what they look like, or how they identify, the children of Oklahoma's schools can reach those places and be whatever they dream to be, as who they authentically are. That's the impression we want. And speaking of impressions, hope, and statistics, having just one accepting adult in a kid's life can reduce the risk of suicide attempt by up to forty percent. Let's be a community full of accepting adults for our youth. Thank you.
That, that speech was hard to follow his point. If he's a speaker for some organization, they probably should get a different one. Yeah, I think I'm gonna
That ends our tonight's agenda, a vote to adjourn is in order.
I think I'm gonna sign up to speak at the next one. My name is Frosty Turpin. All right, let's go back and find out who this asshole is.
Erin Horst. Next speaker, Erin Horst.
Oh, Erin Forst. Okay, I, I've heard that name before. Um, so I'm gonna dig in and look, uh, look more into this guy. Uh, I don't know that he's employed by the school or whatever, but I, like, I don't know, that, like, read the damn room, sir. Uh, let these people make their point and then come back. Yeah, you got a right to come and make your speech if you want to, but what a fucking asshole. What a fucking asshole. Um, let, let's go back and let's hear if anybody yells or screams, I doubt it, but they cut it off really fast.
It's hard enough.
Can I please? For a motion?
Emotion, we adjourn.
Second.
Look at him, they're like, give me the fuck out of here.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. Mrs. Rutman. Yes, Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
And nobody's talking. There we go. Enter the police. And they cut the audio. You see that? That was Mark Officer right there, just popped his head over. Oh, there's cops, looks like he's gonna let's see if they do anything crazy. I don't think they will. Hmm. Uh, yeah, I'm probably gonna sign up, uh, and speak at the next one. I thought about doing it at this one, but I had, the last speech I gave to them, I said that I would never come back. And you should actually go, and matter of fact, you know what, let me, let me actually just pull that speech up. Because what I said in that speech was, was actually really, uh, on point with what we're seeing now. Uh, that would have been in matter of, this right here is the board meeting where I got banned. The last one would have been in May, I think. Let's see.
You know the feeling, those moments when your life changes forever. If you lost or need to update your health
Yeah, and li- listen to what I say to these people. And just how spot on it was to what they're dealing with right now. It may have been later. Let's see. Trying to find it. No, it may not have been May. Uh, maybe it would April. Let's see, April. Where's that? November. Uh, they may have actually, uh, they may have actually cut that. Let's see. There's old Ron Ron. I must have come after him, yeah, here we go. Hold on, sorry, guys.
If you need some help, let me be honest, I don't have a prepared speech with me.
Oh, no, no, it would have been later. Well, shit, I don't wanna keep y'all looking for this, but August, September, oh, that was way before. Um, July, November, December. Oh, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm way off, let's see, May, April, maybe it was this one. And I feel like it was the other one. I feel like it was the April one. Yeah, I think that was the right one, let me go back to it. Uh, or the May one, I meant. Where the hell?
Center and one assistant principal for the eighth grade center
It would have been near the end.
Oklahoma statute Title twenty-five subsection three oh seven
Yeah, there it is, okay. Changeably with here we go.
Related to the specific
How's that? There we go. There we go. All right, so, uh, this will be the last speech that I ever give to the school board ever, for the rest of my life. Uh, we're about to close on house in Mississippi and we'll be moving out there as soon as the school year is done. So I wanted to come here and really talk about those changes that are coming, uh, to my family. Um, and connect this to the broader concept of, uh, cosmic balance, if you will. Now, to clarify, I do not believe in God, I am an atheist. Um, but people can probably use God interchangeably with universal balance or cosmic balance, because it could be God's will, or what have you. Um, and I would posit that universal balance does exist. Where every action precipitates an equal and
Where every action precipitates an equal and opposite reaction, and we know this to be true in physics. Uh, but I believe that that actually expands into the metaphysical where even mundane actions that we take, um, that impact others are balanced over time through this balance that the universe maintains. I'd like to give an example of how the universe, you know, would intervene in my life. Uh, I believe you might remember, um, we were all here on Halloween together. It was that day that you decided to trample all over my constitutional rights. I'm sure you'll remember. Um, even though you were asked to come and give an objective view of evidence of what I had done wrong. Well, at least one of you didn't even look at it because you were too busy, you know, staring at me for whatever reason to judge me about my mannerisms and demeanor. Um, and you had a couple of options there. You could have done the right thing or you could have done the thing that would protect the friend that was within the circle that you have.
That's Margaret Coats.
Even though your friend was making a bad choice. Well, that was the wrong choice, but that was the one that you made and the universe intervened. How do I know this? Because literally the very next day, the judge that you guys chose to see this case said no, wagged his finger in your face, browbeat you and asked you, why are you bullying this man? So that was the universe coming in there to balance with good, something that was bad. And there was another, uh, instance where this was the case. Um, we had an individual who signed a paper that said they weren't employed by the district in order to run for a school board. But went ahead and joined the faculty anyway as an employee and everybody here just, I don't know, ignored this fact that you're not allowed to be an employee and run for the school board, but that didn't matter. You all turned and looked the other way despite the laws that were very clear on that. So this pattern of, you know, unethical behavior just continued. And whenever it came time for me to run, I couldn't because of a technical anomaly with my registration that reverted back to a house I hadn't lived at for twenty years.
It's true.
I did the right thing by saying, well, even though I've lived here for nine years, I can't actually sign this. So my wife, having watched all of you try to bully me around and watched at least one of you stand there and literally lie about me. You know who you are. You stood up there in front of everybody and lied, so she threw her hat in the ring and literally would know it within a day or two of filing that.
Truth.
Somebody reached out to her and she wasn't even looking for a job. They reached out to her and offered her a job as the senior director of information technology at a place out in Mississippi. You know why? Because the universe has to balance all of the evil that other people do with some good and rewards people who do the right thing and stand up for people for the right reasons. And it kind of reminds me actually of somebody who once said, uh, well, if he doesn't suffer the consequences of his actions, he's just gonna do it again. I gotta agree with the sentiment there, though it wasn't applicable to the situation that it was, you know, lodged at me. But I have to say, I, I agree. People who do bad things should suffer the consequences. And it appears to me that the universe has now put me in a position to where I can now hold those who haven't been held accountable accountable. So who am I to go against what the universe says? Shouldn't I just be a vessel? Others would say this is God's will that did this and God is the one that put me down this path. So should I just say no or should I go ahead and do what I need to do, which is hold people accountable for the poor things and the bad decisions that they make? Thank you.
Now, I, I only played that because this, this speaks to the cosmic balance that I referred to where these people just keep doing shitty things. They protect each other. They don't deal with the bullying. They bully themselves, their teachers bully, their, uh, principals when it gets brought up to their attention, just, oh, I know the teacher, he's a good guy. And they just continue to let this shit happen. And now look what happened. You got a national spotlight on them yet again, and it's going to continue to happen until you get rid of those fucking people and put people in there that have integrity. They won't do shit like this, that won't stand for bullying, that won't allow teachers to just ignore the fact that somebody's being called a faggot or gay or lesbian or, or, you know, pussy or whatever it is that they say these days with kids. So until that happens, shit like this is just gonna keep happening. And, and as I told that board, you, you guys need to get rid of her because she's like a, she's a fucking cancer. Uh, and the, the people that run that school are a cancer. And the kids are the ones that are gonna suffer. And now we're seeing that play out in real time. So I mean, I, I told them that that was gonna be the last time I ever gave a speech and, you know, I, I don't know, it's probably not even worth me going down there. Uh, you know, I don't live there anymore, but, but still it, it's, it, this just pisses me off to see something that I dealt with personally at the school with fucking bullying and, and principals doing nothing about it. Or just, oh, wow, you know, our teachers are really good. Uh, it just, it just pisses me off and, and I feel like, uh, maybe, maybe, uh, me saying something about my experience uh, might spark something inside of them. Who fucking knows? I, I know they won't want to see my name on there, though. They fucking hate me. They all hate me. Uh, but anyway, guys, you know, I don't know what the hell that guy's deal was, Aaron Frost or Forst? I'm gonna look that up, figure it out and I'll probably make a post about it or even a video because that's, that guy, what a douche. What an absolute douche. You know, I was real shitty to you guys before, but, uh, let me be shitty to these guys over here. And it was funny though, he turns to those people, it's like, that's bullying. Like deadpan, the, the people shouldn't have screamed at him. He, you know, he has a right to say what he wants to say, even though, you know, he's a fucking asshole. But anyway, that's it for now, guys. Uh, you know, like and subscribe, share this if you found any benefit to it whatsoever. At least now everybody will know all the names of the people and the players that are in that board, uh, meeting moving forward. So we'll see what happens. We'll see how this all plays out, but i- it's if, if Margaret Coats is, the history of Margaret Coats is any indication of the future, she's, she's going to find some clever way to weasel her way out of it like she always does. All right, guys, that's it. We'll catch you next time. This is the liberal loudmouth on the Loudmouths. Peace.